Good morning. Shane Henson, I'd like to speak on the Rule 23 motions and general public comment.
Okay, so you'll have three minutes for the motions and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Shane Henson and I'm a public policy advocate with inner-city law center, which is a proud member of the Keep LA housed coalition. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the first responders, city employees, and volunteers who have selflessly responded to this ongoing emergency. As we all know, these wildfires have devastated our communities and will continue to deeply impact tenants in Los Angeles who are losing their homes, losing their incomes, being evicted, and facing the threat of price gouging. We need rapid policy change to ensure housing stability and prevent spikes in rents and evictions as our city moves forward. Keep LA House asks that this body use their emergency powers pursuant to Rule 23 to freeze rents, enact an eviction moratorium, ban algorithmic rental price fixing and tenant screening, and enforce anti-price gouging laws. As the fires are contained, we need to ensure that Angelenos attempting to find a new home and those that are just trying to hold on to their current one do not fall prey to those who would seek to profit off this tragedy. I hope the city can do something to protect them. Thank you.
My name is Faisa Malik and I'm a managing attorney at Public Counsel for Housing Justice. I'm also a CD 11 resident, so the Palisades fire this week hit very close to home for me and my neighbors. As Councilmember Park noted, we lost thousands of homes, but we've also lost schools and community spaces. We will never be the same. Thank you, Councilmember and CD 11 team, for your efforts, and thank you to our first responders on the front line protecting our city. I'm here today to ask this council to take emergency action to stop evictions and rent increases while we remain in the state of emergency. These fires have gravely exacerbated our existing countywide affordable housing and homelessness crisis. Overnight, thousands of Angelenos lost their housing. We do not even know the full scope of the direct and indirect impacts yet. Countless people have been displaced. I personally know Westside families who lost their homes and are now seeking rental housing. People are experiencing awful illegal price gouging. We have also heard that the fires have financially impacted our low-income folks, especially immigrant workers around the city. Construction workers, caregivers, landscapers, retail workers who have lost their jobs. These tenants live all over the city. Some of these tenants lost their housing too. As these fires still continue to devastate our region, we can't afford more strain on our already strained housing stock. There will be downstream effects we can't even fully know yet. We need to hit pause on evictions to keep people housed as we work to rapidly rehouse all impacted people and recover as a city. There's a lot of hard work ahead of us as a city, but we can't allow this crisis to lead to even more evictions and displacement right now. Thank you.
I work at the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles as the data manager for Stay Housed LA. We provide legal assistance, outreach, and education for tenants facing eviction in the city of LA. I'm here to speak on the effect of these wildfires on the tenants that we serve. Last week during the citywide emergency, LHD received thousands of notices of eviction, with the majority of these notices for non-payment of rent. In the wake of the Maui wildfires in 2023, that community saw a 44% increase in rental prices. Already in Los Angeles, we are seeing hundreds of instances of rent gouging inflating rental prices far above the allowed 10% increase. The majority of tenants we represent at Stay Housed have incomes less than 30% of the area median income. These tenants cannot pay another increase in rent due to the fires and are at even higher risk of becoming homeless, especially if the number of tenants being evicted overwhelms our ability to assist them. Tenants in Los Angeles are already impacted by the financial effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, high rents, and housing shortages, and cannot weather another crisis. Thank you.
Hola, buenos dias damas y caballeros, amigos amigas, representantes de esta mesa, de este jurídico. Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Rafael Sanchez. Estamos aquí esta mañana representando al sindicato de la Unión de Comida Rápida.
Permítanme.
My name is Rafael Sanchez. Good morning, members. I'm here to represent the Fast Food Union.
Ah, venimos esta mañana para unirnos y manifestar nuestro mas sentido. Ahora sí que ese sentimiento que estamos viendo, que estamos pasando en California.
We are here to express our deep sentiment for everything that we are looking around in California.
Por los desastres y por las cosas que han pasado todos nuestros vecinos, toda la gente que ha perdido todo.
For the disasters and for the people who have lost many things and have lost everything.
Por todos los desastres que sabemos que están ocurriendo en nuestra área de Los Ángeles, en el estado de Los Ángeles en especial, en el condado acá de esta área. Ah, queremos manifestar nuestro sentir.
Well, we want to express our feeling and emotions for all the disasters that are happening around the area.
A los compañeros que prestan el servicio de comida, que han perdido todo también, y bueno pues decirles que todos somos un gran equipo, que todos somos California, y que estamos unidos para poder ayudar si es que se puede, y pues ahora sí que estamos con toda la gente que lo ha perdido todo. Muchas gracias.
There are people from the fast food industry who have lost everything, and we are here to tell them that we are here united and working as a team. Thank you.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Lizeth Aguilar, y soy miembro del Sindicato de Trabajadores de la Comida Rápida. Hoy estoy aquí para manifestar mi sentir por todas esas familias.
My name is Elizabeth Aguilar, and I'm here as part of the Fast Food Union, and I'm here to express my sentiment, especially for all those families who have lost things.
Y por todas las comunidades que están pasando por este desastre de los fuegos.
And my heart goes also to the communities that have been affected by these fires.
También le quiero dar las gracias.
I also want to thank.
A los bomberos, a los policías, y a todos los que han puesto su vida para apoyar a las comunidades.
I also want to thank the firefighters, the police, and all, to the volunteers who have supported the peoples and communities on these days.
Y todos los trabajadores esenciales.
And also all the essential workers.
Le damos las gracias.
We thank them.
Por todo lo que están haciendo.
For everything they are doing right now.
Sabemos que no es fácil lo que está pasando.
We know it is not easy what is going on right now.
El perder tu hogar y estar viviendo afuera sabiendo de que es difícil, por eso estamos aquí para con nuestro más sentir, con toda la comunidad.
We know it's not easy to lose your home and to have no houses, so that's why we are here to support those people and all the community.
Thank you.
I represent a large San Fernando Valley coalition that's really concerned that over half the firefighters out there are basically modern-day slaves. They're getting paid less minimum wage. These are prisoners that are being forced to fight the fires, but they're not really being given any on-road to get a job as an actual paid firefighter after they get out. Sure, there's sort of a flow chart that's present where a prisoner can hypothetically get hired as a firefighter, but the hurdles are so insurmountable. I've talked to young men that have gone through this program, and it's a very low rate of people that actually are able to jump through all of the hoops. It's modern-day slavery for young people to be put on the fire lines, poor young people to fight for wealthy people's property. And we're going to be following up to make sure that these prisoners get their records completely wiped, their felonies erased, and they be given jobs.
Do you want to know who I am, Mr. Groth?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I'm relieved to say that while my little family is safe and our apartment is safe on the edge of CD 11, like so many, we know dozens of families who have been affected by these fires directly. Teachers and families in my kid's school, friends and colleagues and more. To use Councilmember Rodriguez's language, there is a special place in hell for people exploiting this crisis. And specifically, I'm thinking about landlords drastically raising rents on vacant units, some over 100% in the last few days alone. The LA Tenants Union has put together a spreadsheet showing dozens and dozens and dozens of these properties, and it is so gross and inhumane to see. It's incredibly disgusting, and I think it's part of the glue that ties this current emergent crisis from these fires with the daily and deadly crisis of housing across Los Angeles. On any given day, tens of thousands of people are living outside by an emergency caused by poverty, housing affordability, and housing availability. I don't say any of this to change the subject or take attention away from where it needs to be today, and I sincerely hope that we can all recognize that everyone deserves safe and stable housing, and that unfortunately, the way our society frames and defines emergency and crisis too often leaves out those for whom emergency and crisis is just a normal, accepted part of daily life. While we talk about resilience and recovery, let's frame that around housing and resources for all of our communities living through daily emergency, and frame emergency in our collective response in a way that is felt across all of our communities in Los Angeles, and not framed through things like having a quote-unquote "successful Olympics," knowing that that so-called success is directly tied to the ongoing housing crisis. Shout out to so many community groups and volunteers around the city coming together in support of our communities regardless of when and how folks lose their homes.
Groth, I don't know why we didn't read any of those specials into the agenda. Nine out of 10 of them were posted on the cork board as public comment was going on. How are people supposed to comment on something they haven't had the chance to read? A lot of anger at looters, and I get that, but I didn't see any bit of that anger directed towards landlords, price gouging people, and frankly, somebody desperately in need of help and impoverished, I have a bit more sympathy for than a landlord who has a second home and wants to price gouge people thousands of dollars. There's an after-action report you're looking for, and I just want to make sure, is that after-action report going to be public? Because we had an after-action report on MRT over at the county. That wasn't made public. We've had reports on stuff like Rick Jacobs and sexual harassment that was happening under Garcetti. That wasn't made public. Our MIA mayor, we got a warning of life-threatening and destructive windstorms.
Hold on, can you pause this time really quick? I'm sorry. So, the gentleman who's clapping, again, please don't interrupt the public comment. This is your first and only warning. Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead.
We didn't have our mayor come back when the warning signs were blaring. Waited until, what, eight, 10 hours into the process to decide to come back. This declaration of emergency was signed at 5:00 PM for a fire that started at 10:00 AM. And people wonder, would the mayor's presence have mattered? If it didn't, then we got really big problems if the presence of our mayor doesn't matter. We had bickering between LADWP and LAPD. We never, we don't think that there was ever a point where they were going back and forth between MHD and Karen. Did you wait to sign the emergency declaration until you heard back from Karen? Is that why it took till 5:00 PM? Did you, like, was you being acting mayor while presiding over a council meeting a distraction? I don't want to make light of things. Tuesday, we faced impossible conditions, but I don't get the people who say that we couldn't have done anything differently, who say that this was just completely impossible. There's no way of slowing things. Maybe we wouldn't stop it, but you're implying that the work of our firefighters was futile, trivial that night. I can promise you, they probably saved some lives and homes and pets. And maybe in the grand scheme of things, it might be a marginal difference, but is one life, one home, one dog, saved? Marginal? We're here because y'all defunded every other department to pay for LAPD. All of you care about LAPD. I don't want anybody to think otherwise. But why are we here? There's been a claim that, you know, I just want to note, there are three of you who actually did vote against those LAPD raises and voted against the budget, so y'all can speak up. The rest of you, we cut 61 bodies from LAPD, and there are some who say, oh, well, we gave them more money. Bob and Matt are talking about money that hasn't been allocated. LAPD was asked to go through a budget reduction exercise, so clearly, we were thinking about maybe putting them through the wringer a little bit more. Protect Ms. Crowley. If Karen decides to find her a new off-ramp, I think Kristin Kelly should appeal to the council, and let's find five of you to vote against her. Let's see it, because I guarantee you, everybody in LA loves Ms. Crowley a hell of a lot more than they do any of you. So remember that.
Good morning. I am Asia Brown, and I would like to speak to Rule 23, 56, general, and also the recovery committee formation noted by Councilmember Park.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmembers, council president, I'm an esteemed member of this body, city leaders, public servants, and stakeholders. My name is Asia Brown, and I am both a lifelong member and servant of our community. I was raised in Altadena and Pasadena, spent 20 years as a public servant, planning commissioner, policymaker, including serving as mayor of the city of Compton, and now as a policy and government technology expert, designing and delivering systems to wrap government around people. Because I personally believe and am committed to enforcing that government does not have to be inefficient. It can streamline aid. We break down government silos. We deliver efficiently, reduce time, cost savings, and provide transparency and enable governments to equitably deliver scarce public resources. When the fires broke out and after I evacuated my parents, who have lived in Altadena for over 60 years, I immediately thought of the significant journey ahead for all of you that have been charged and elected to providing emergency support and leading recovery for our communities. As someone raised and that have lived and served in historically marginalized communities, I stand here with deep experience to state emphatically that there cannot be equity or efficiency without data and technology. These tools are essential to integrating resources, staff, departments, and systems to assess, communicate, and deliver aid and critical information to residents effectively. Government can be efficient, and we have a new administration that is hinging a whole new department to making sure that that is the case. I stand before you today with a unique perspective grounded in lived experience and professional expertise, and I understand the challenges, systems, and demands that you all face as leaders. I am now lending my unique perspective and experience and resources to continue to serve governments across the nation and in this region, including Los Angeles County and Long Beach, as partner and head of impact with Forward Platform. We were built by public servants, Microsoft and Amazon technologists, and together, we are dedicated to empowering governments with the tools and efficiencies that I wish I had in my 20 years in government. As former mayor of Compton, I understand the insurmountable challenges many of you are now facing, embedded in systemic issues, limited resources, navigating red tape, and balancing the immense expectations of your constituents who depend on you all for answers. I'm here to stand with you to support this community in its greatest hour of need with urgency and a personal commitment to partner with the city to address these longstanding and most pressing issues, housing, emergency support, and rebuilding. I was contacted by the city of Los Angeles almost two years ago, 2022, in December, to deliver and design a system for inside safe. And now, two years later.
General public comment.
Thank you. I will wrap up. And now, two years later, there still is a need for a streamlined intake system to be able to deliver resources, make sure people are inside safely, and to also ensure that scarce public resources are delivered efficiently and transparently. When I think of the thousands of Angelenos that are now facing homelessness, I understand innately that technology and data must be at the center of this response effort and going forward. I urge all of you to act, not just as policymakers, but as public stewards of the public trust. I am not a person that has not stood in your shoes. I dedicated 20 years serving as an analyst, a director, an administrator, and also as a policymaker, and I'm here to say that technology must be at the core of how you all respond. As someone that was woken up at 4:00 in the morning with a false alert to evacuate, because there are broken technology systems here re-traumatizing your residents, and so I am here to offer our support. We've built a system for you all. You can have it for free. We just want to make sure that there is a better way to service this most pressing moment, and I'm not here from the technology sector. I'm here as your former colleagues to offer.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
That's right.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, fire starters. So, let's see here. Number one, we defeated the dirty Armenian Nazarian. Let's give everybody a hand. Well done. Yes, number one, the voters were asked to tax themselves, Buckethead. See what item one is, Buckethead? And so what happened was, the voters realized they don't have to tax themselves. They could simply protest. They defeated the evil Armenian Nazarian who doesn't want to give water to Mr. Herman. Fuck him. Well done. So now we get to number two. Fuck Wilshire Boulevard and KKK, Katie Yaroslavsky, evil bitch. She wants to give improvements. You don't want to improve anybody's life, KKK. You and that dirty, evil, little hat-wearing little fucker over there on the beach there. What's his name?
Oh, you mean the Zuv Beach?
Yeah. They named the beach after him. No, he's a bitch, not a beach. Then we have number three. Oh, look at that. We have Kevin DeLeon in a skirt. Kevin 2.0 and number three. Let's see here. Fuck Violet Avenue and fuck Santa Fe. Again, we do not want your taxes. No, to Gerardo. And then, let's see here. We have other bullshit. Let's see here. Isabelle, just being another Kevin with a skirt. It's no difference. Liar. And then of course, sleazy, easy, Marchese. Now, number six, sitting there trying to lie that he's going to have equity projects. He doesn't even wear a tie to the meeting. How the fucking you conduct business as the president and not even wear a fucking tie?
Mr. Spindly, please stay on topic.
Well, I'm just simply saying, sir, on number six, if you give me a fucking chance, DEI, I will simply say fuck number six. And then we have the motions. And then the worst thing of all, the worst thing since AIDS and cancer, is Tracy Park. Yeah, she's over there on TV, and there's motions there, and you'll see the motion that she presented on Special One, trying to funnel money to landlords, trying to rewrite building codes, and Amelda Padilla sits next to her and conspires with her willingly. Why do you do that, Amelda? Why do you want to go to prison? I thought you didn't want that. I guess she does. And how come Buckethead doesn't say anything? And how come the council president's head continues to become more and more shiny as he puts that shiny sheen shit on his head for the FEMA money? Oh, that's right. So again, they're going to steal as much FEMA money as possible, people. Stop the evil of Tracy Park. And now, we get to the fires. So today I bring this cup, yeah, that's her. Yes, I have filled it with water, and I will give it to you to help fight the fires. That's my donation. Let's give me a hand for that. Oh, well done. Yes. Now, what I, what we did over at Encino is we got on the roof of our house, and we did an old German trick. We simply take and we urinate all over the roof of the house, and that insulates the roof from fires. It's an old German tradition. So we go and we get fucked up downstairs and drink all kinds of beer, and then we urinate on the roof for multiple days. So now, the entire roof is now secure and safe from fire thanks to German urine. And remember, everybody, these people here are lying to you. You can get FEMA money. All you have to do is be black. So if you have any black ancestors, be sure to put them on the.
Mr. Spindly, your time has expired.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney and members, and members in the chambers, before we go to the next speaker, I'm going to call a recess. We will recess this meeting until 12:15. We've got a number of motions that need to be distributed and that we need to get in front of members so that when public comment is completed, we can vote. So, council stands in recess until 12:15. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our 15-minute break, which actually took an hour and 10 minutes, my apologies to everyone impacted. If you were in line to speak last time, if you could just come to the podium. Yes, come on up.
I'm here.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, Audit LA, you know, and Bob, please listen, you know, like.
Which items did you like to speak to?
All of them, and I'm not going to name them like you'd like me to, and try kicking me off for not naming the numbers.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead and begin.
Okay. You know what, Bob? I don't appreciate you talking to Ms. Padilla for so long when, during public comment, because that's your time.
This sounds like general public comment. I'm going to ask that you please stick to the items first.
Okay, then we'll get to it, but I'm not angry. And shout out to Smoke and Scan and everyone here. I hope you all did well. Everyone within the voice, who can hear my voice, that y'all did well in the fire. Okay, when it comes to all the lighting, okay, issues, we need lighting, okay? And number one, I believe, is Council District Two. And Mr. Nazarian, you're new. I hope you're listening. There is a lot of issues in two, and I'm not blaming you yet, because I know you're just getting up and running, but if you look at drive-by the Walgreens at Violent and Magnolia, it really needs your attention because, you know, the broken window thing, theory is actually a reality, and we don't want to go downhill. So I would like contact information, please. And yes, you know, I know I look familiar to you. Yes, we do know each other. I will be in contact with your office if I can. So when it comes to lighting, yeah, we need lighting. What we don't need is the ones whether here for the bar, you know, like Follow Your Heart, you know, to the liquor store. That's, like, just for the name alone, I say no. If you have to follow your heart to go get booze, then you know what, it's not needed. We don't need more booze. We don't need more alcohol. What we need is more water. That's what we need. We need freaking water. And after you all congratulate yourself on everything you've been doing in this, you know, you know, thank you for anything you've done since, you know, the fire started, but up until that point, I see all these things on this thing for, you know, liquor store, abatement, all this stuff, but where's the water? Why is the reservoir unplugged and empty in the Palisades? Why do people living along the ocean have their whole community burned down? Like, can you guys answer that? Are you even listening? No, you're not. See, and that's part of, right, public comment, I have to wait the public comment, to say you guys should be freaking listening to the public because we're sick and tired of it? We're sick and tired if you're not listening. Right, Smoke and Scan? I bet he's, I bet they're sick and tired of it too, because I know I am. Y'all listen to each other, okay? I'll go straight to, I'll go to public comments. I can't hold it back anymore. I can't hold it back. Thank you, Mr. McCosker, because you were listening. I saw you listening. I even saw Mr. Lee trying to listen. And Ms. Padilla was trying to listen too, but Bob had to get bending her ear, and she can't be the safe, Bob, leave me alone. I'm trying to listen to the public, because you know what? That could hurt her politically, so I'm going to say it for her. Bob, sit down and listen to the public when we're talking, okay? We have things to say. Y'all listen to each other. Y'all patting each other on the back about how much you've done during this fire, you know, situation, you know, Ms. Park, everything, all the how heroic you are. But you know what? You had a lot to say and do with the stuff that led up to this fire that was a disaster. Like, why are you defunding our LAPD and giving everything to LAPD? No offense to the slows here, but LAPD needs some of that money. Okay, why, I know, Bob, you're not going to, you're going to keep talking. I get it. But you know, I'm going to keep calling you out, and you still owe me that apology. So do you, Ms. Ramon. And so do you, Hugo, for allowing the cult of Scientology to waste over 100,000 gallons of water over the summer without any repercussions, and those planners are still there, sir.
Next speaker.
Next speaker.
All of the Rule 23 motions, agenda item 56, and general public comment, please.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
Sure thing. So in Ray, the way in which these motions were dealt with, California Government Code Section 54956.5 specifies that you should have an emergency meeting for emergency motions. You didn't do that. If you're going to ludicrously have emergency motions at a regular city council meeting per California Government Code Section 54954.2, you need to post them 72 hours before the meeting. This is completely illegal. I know you guys don't care about the rule of law, but it does matter to us, the little people. Additionally, in the past, this body, when it has special motions, will give three minutes total to the special motions, in addition to the three minutes generally allotted for the agenda, in addition to one minute of public comment, giving us seven minutes. You're going to give us some BS. 20 minutes total for the public to comment on things you just posted. This is Marquise Harris Dawson's leadership. Thank you so much, sir, for your contempt for law and for legal norms. On to. contempt for law and for legal norms. Onto the fires. Marquise Harris Dawson, in general, just please bring back telephonic public comment. Everything I'm going to say here out is mostly not my opinion. It's state from the mouths of LAFD personnel. Crowley and Terocis both ignored staffing issues. Crowley had three budgeting periods to demand adequate funding for apparatus, including repairs, equipment, and staffing, failed to get it. Crowley should have been screaming at the public since assuming office in 2022 about potential lethal catastrophe looming due to underfunding resourcing of LAFD, did nothing because she's an appointed lapdog. There has been no pushback. Yeah, the LAFD chief needs to be in an elected position. Otherwise, we're just going to have more of the same. Last fiscal year, LAFD only had four months in the black, then eight months of vendors holding debt and getting paid after the approval of a new budget. Every new budget mostly covers debts from previous year. There is no funding for LAFD. The community, I'm speaking to the community, the four million Angelenos who are served by this joke of a city council, you need to understand, no freaking money for LAFD. Need to fix that. LAFD needs to be independently audited by an outside agency. It needs to be objectively, independently assessed, assessed the necessity of so many assistant chiefs and higher up, assess the mass incompetence of the department. And just for all of you giving us your crocodile tears, we're so devastated. 12 of you voted to defund LAFD. I'm going to repeat that. 12 of you voted to defund LAFD, including you, Tracy Park, and you, Monica Rodriguez. You both love to posture as loving the fire department. You voted to defund it. And the three of you that didn't vote to defund, so do Martinez, Ramon, and Hernandez. You just bitched about how terrible LAPD is in your opinion. Like, there was no expression of concern about the lethal consequences of defunding LAFD. What else? Oh, yeah, and just Tracy Park in particular.
General public comment.
Yeah, you love to yammer about how much you love LAFD. The union gave you 400K. You voted to defund them. Screw you. You guys, you voted for a vaccine mandate under which valuable, irreplaceable fire, LAFD employees RJ Capatrick, Nate Heldon, Matt Mamon, John Knox, Chris Curtis, and Ed Brocksmitt were fired for refusing to comply with this illegal pseudo-scientific vaccine mandate. It's also the reason why nobody wants to work here and why you have no recruits. You all need to resign, especially the loathsome neoliberal joke of a mayor. Crowley needs to resign for having done nothing because she's an appointed lapdog. I mean, this is, she's just a run-of-the-mill bureaucrat. She's not uniquely evil, but she needs to resign. It needs to be an elected position. You're all bought and paid for morons, and may you all rot in hell for all the people you've killed. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you for those who are giving me your attention. My name's Pidella Nahosa. I'm a staff attorney with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. Lafla, if you've ever heard of them. I practice eviction defense, so I primarily represent LA tenants, most of the, most who are impoverished, who are facing fear of losing their homes. In the last three months, from October to December, the city of LA had 5,500 evictions that have been filed. Within this past week in January, Los Angeles Housing Department has received over 2,700 eviction notices that have been filed. Every week, I go to court at Stanley Moss Courthouse down the street from here, and I see countless members of my community, both elders and youth, parents and children, who are scared, helpless, and aware that they might not have a home to return to. I have clients with Section 8 vouchers who are currently living in their cars with their children because they had to move out of their apartment, but they did not have enough time to secure a new housing due to the scarcity of it and the time that it takes for moving vouchers to process. This is something that's happening now in Los Angeles, not taking into account what is going to happen in light of recent disasters that are still ongoing. We don't need to guess what is going to be the result of these tragedies in Los Angeles. We have countless examples. In Maui, rent skyrocketed 44% from June 2023 to June 2024 as a result of the fires that they had withstand. Five years after Hurricane Katrina, rent prices remained 33% higher compared to after the storm. So it is always a tragedy when thousands of neighbors and community members lose their homes and personal belongings regardless of the cause. We must act to keep people in their homes and allow Los Angeles to recover from this ongoing tragedy. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
So, we've heard about the maintenance off of Vineland. But why is it that Armenian motherfuckers don't provide me water when I am ill? Due to the goddamn length of the fucking fires and smoke and dirt and dust that you white nigger politicians have provided by the mayor to find that the majority of us are here to protest those existing streetlights? We don't want no fucking streetlights. We got the sun and the moon and the earth because as a Native American, we know how to play with the land, as though. So you see, you cannot be enacted as an attorney, but you can act like an ass when you accompany me with the ordinance abandoning why I, like a Mexican, like to do the shit I do because I know how to play the game too, fool. Because I can read, I can see when I'm here with all of you fools. So on 6.95-6.127 LA Code, am I right? Circle K, little fat part K, am I on topic? I believe so, as though. So let me go into the other item, which revolvers and athletic clubs and Elysian parsonasms because niggers there don't need that kind of shit. You can't send a police officer to a fire if he don't have bullets for his fucking gun. So do something by the executive power in which I demand Fable sucks a dick to understand that LAPD reports on council. That's the reason why Nentia Ramon's on her phone, because she knows a dick like me has authority because I'm a minority. And to Smoke and Scan, I'm back. NWA Mexican, I can't
Mr. Herman, this is your only warning. Stick to the agenda items or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Yeah. Well, what item I'm on, fool? I've been on topic. Oh, hell, yeah. It's right here. Items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes required. Consideration, you moron. There's over, there's over 45. As a matter of fact, they go as far back, far back, as I can remember, Los Angeles Housing Department sucks a dick like this big one. Or should I say, a big one. So do something about that. Now to my non-a-general public comment, you dirty niggers. All of you are responsible. All your fucking grandstanding don't mean a goddamn thing perfect to me because all you had to do was have the simple formula of maintenance. Not like that 1961 fire in Bel Air, not this other shit of excuses. Your fucking mayor's in Africa doing work for who? Definitely not for me or any of you. So the goddamn nigger is dirty. For all I know, she's like Mr. Payne, the priest that liked to fuck the boys right at the deacon table. You don't do that shit. You don't fuck young children. You don't fuck the public, and you don't fuck Smoke and Scan. You smoke it. So we don't need no water. Let the motherfucker burn. Burn, Palisades, burn. You got me sick. I was sick for a fucking week, and where's that fucking Armenian with the water bottle? All of you are a bunch of dirty niggers.
Mr. Herman, your time has expired. And as we wait for the next speaker to come up, for those of you who are just joining us for the first time, or if you are back because you are a regular listener, please note that even on a day like today, we still have to listen to people say these terrible things. It doesn't mean that this council endorses it, appreciates it, or agrees with it. So we appreciate your patience. Thank you. Good afternoon. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Number 11. 11 is about the public convenience and necessity for the sale of alcohol beverage for off-site. I have a huge problem with this because I have seen so many elementary school kids have easy access to alcohol. I have seen so many drunk middle school Figueroa students, and now how do they access alcohol in such a young age? That is the question I have to ask for every single of those city council member. Are we trying to provide more alcohol to the public so all of those 10-years-old, 15-years-old, they have easier opportunity, easier access to have those alcohol when they are, when, when their age is illegal to drink, consume, or use alcohol of any kind? So this item 11 makes absolutely no sense. And then move on to item number 39. It's about the homelessness emergency declaration. I have a concern about this is because I have always
Speaker, item number 39 is not open for public comment, so please move on to another item.
Okay, then. Item number 56, Declaration of Emergency of the Fire, number 56. I have advocated so far about this that you only, it always after the fire, you realize that you need a firefighter. It's always after a criminal event, after the looter taking over the street, you realize that, you know, you need more cops. So we should know this. We should know we need more firefighters before the fire. And then we should know we need more police officers before the criminal take over the street. But however, why our council cannot react before the incidents occurred? But our council always react after the damage was already done. And then move on to my general now.
Thanks. We have one minute.
For the general, I will continue to talking about the price gouging. Right now, in Figueroa, before the, the fire, the Figueroa is approximately $300. But right now, after the fire, the Figueroa girl are charging $400, $500. So this price gouging is absolutely unacceptable because every single council member said, every board of supervisor, always state governor, said there should, there should be no tolerance on price gouging. But in our council District Eight, in our president, Harry Dawson, I see that Figueroa girl are price gouging, charging 50%, 100% more than their regular prices. So we really need to ask for our president, Jason, and then council member, Jason Figueroa, to control the price gouging, and then the condom price gouging, and the Figueroa girl price gouging on council District Eight.
Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to.
Great. I signed up under the name Megan, speaking on the introduced items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
Hi, I'm an organizer with Gabriela Los Angeles, an organization advocating for the rights and welfare of Filipino women. I'm also a lifelong Angelino and a current CD 13 resident. All week, as we've been evacuating our homes and trying to shield our health from the toxic air, people's organizations have been on the ground, facilitating donation drives and meeting with migrants and workers on the ground who are asking for PPE, for shelter and housing, for hazard pay, and for an eviction and rent freeze. There is no doubt that our communities are suffering, whether they've lost their homes or their livelihoods. So with all due respect, it's extremely disingenuous to sit here and watch you all pat yourselves on the back and claim that this disaster was unpreventable when in reality, this extreme level of destruction was fully and totally preventable. For decades, you all have been warned about the worsening climate crisis and fire conditions, and essentially sat on your thumbs to prioritize policing, profit, and private development over the people. Workers have been forced to go back to work. Migrants continue to live in fear of ICE raids amid crisis, which is a fear that was worsened by the fact that our leadership just this week invited Donald Trump to our city with open arms. Our streets are currently lined with militarized police and the National Guard who are standing around with M4 rifles, doing nothing but intimidating already struggling communities, while the actual disaster response has been left entirely to a direly underfunded fire department and 100% unpaid volunteers and community organizers. You may not have lit the fire yourselves, but it is your longstanding neglect and hollowing out of emergency services that has led us to this point in the first place. There is looting going on, but it's not from desperate members of the public. It's from you all who are looting the people's money and mismanaging it in times of need. Our community's demands are extremely simple: relief from the fire, safety at home and at work, and accountability for this unnatural disaster. I call on you all to do the bare minimum and respond to this, not inflate the threat of looting just to further pad the law enforcement budget. Thank you.
Fred Sutton, all introduced items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
Fred Sutton with California Apartment Association, CD 11 resident for almost 30 years, and my heart goes out to obviously everybody impacted. Penal Code 396 price gouging laws are in effect. Strict controls are on existing tenancies and vacancies as it relates to rent and price increases. For people that are violating that, help throw the book at them. But these emergency motions should deal with the fire and those displaced and immediately impacted. We have serious concerns on Special 16, and it should not proceed forward today. There is an incomplete moratorium proposed for those who merely attest, and there is a call for a citywide rent freeze regardless of impact. It is irresponsible, déjà vu to ill-thought-out COVID policy, and goes well beyond those in immediate need and dire straits. CAA and our owners stand ready to do their part, but it must be responsible policymaking and deal with the issue at hand, which is the utter devastation of those impacted and the communities that have been wiped off the map. Again, we stand ready to do our part, but there must be responsible policymaking moving forward on housing regulations. Thank you for all you do.
Hi, my name is Rika, a member of Migrante, a grassroots organization fighting for the rights and welfare of migrant Filipino workers. I'm speaking on behalf of our Filipino community members and essential workers in the San Fernando Valley who risk their safety and health just to go to work amidst the wildfires. My mom is a caregiver and her family lives in North Hollywood. She works 14 hours, seven days a week at a care facility in Pasadena. She has chronic asthma. She still has to go to work as the eaten fire burns nearby. This is the same situation for my friend's mom who works as a caregiver in Encino. One day, she went to work and the fires from the Pacific Palisades had already reached Encino, and she still has to go to work. There are other Filipino migrant workers who got called into work while their homes and families were evacuated. They got their homes destroyed. For immigrants like us who don't live in fancy mansions but in overcrowded apartments living off of low pay, we cannot afford to miss a day of work because we wouldn't be able to meet our needs. Our community members saw the price gouging of goods and the potential for rent to increase. Many have expressed fear of the ICE raids that have been happening here in California while the wildfires are happening. This is not acceptable. We need accountability and action now. We demand emergency compensation. We demand safety and asylum to immigrants. We demand more budget allocated for social services and fire protection. We demand immediate hazard pay for essential workers now. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nini. I am a nurse assistant, and I'm part of an organization called La Casa, which is made up of health workers and advocates. I'm also a resident of CD 14 in a historically Filipino and Latino neighborhood. I'm one of hundreds of thousands who are affected by the wildfires and with that, the toxic air. My neighbor shared of her son's asthma flaring up. Elderly tenants facing an illegal eviction reported of rashes developing on their skin. And members in my community, fellow health workers, and Filipino caregivers told us of having to evacuate their patients as their facilities in Altadena or workplaces in the Palisades burned to the ground. Just like the pandemic, Filipinos are on the front lines, once again risking their lives for the health and well-being of all. We should expect that these wildfires will have significant effects on people's health, especially for those that have pre-existing diseases like diabetes, hypertension, and obesity, diseases that are prevalent in black, brown, immigrant, and poor communities. The disproportionate attention given to the issue of looting only hides the truth of the matter. Let's be honest. You all approved the cutting of millions to the LA Fire Department to give a $3 billion budget to the LAPD. Millions that have, could have, that could have saved people's lives, people's homes, Millions that could have saved people's lives, people's homes, and all of our futures. We're in a public health crisis of your doing, and we don't need just immediate relief. We need proactive government for long-term change, proactive government action for long-term change. On behalf of my community, health workers, Filipino workers, essential workers, we demand hazard pay to all essential workers, emergency compensation for those who are displaced, healthcare and safety for immigrants and other people affected, rent freeze and eviction moratorium, and for policymakers that put people's health, livelihood, and safety over corporate greed and personal gain. Thank you.
So at this time, I believe we're going to reopen public comment on only the specials. So if you would like to speak on only the specials, that's the rule 23s that are posted on the board there, please line up at the left-hand side of council chambers. You will have up to a three-minute max, and we're going to take as many people as we can within, for the first 20 minutes. Please start the time. Go ahead, you have three minutes for the items.
So we go into this criteria about the functions of government again. And the whole scenario here is motion after motion on that board behind me where I got this information. And only Tracy Park has, what, about 16 items up there for today? And it makes me question items, I don't know, is it 11 or 19, talking about home loans? This fucking country is not based on freebie shit, motherfuckers. No one has a right to free shit, other than I and Trump. This is our country, and we're taking it back. If you want a fucking loan, get in line. FEMA doesn't provide loans if you are here illegally. It's for American citizens like myself, a dark nigger, dirty nigger, a motherfucker who provides to this fucked-up state that your fucked-up governor and your fucked-up mayor created the hazards and crisis of a fire, dickhead. Then we go into item 23, moron, pathetic, nimbuso, arrogant, belligerent Circle K.
So you're welcome to speak to the rule 23 motions, but please stick to that where you will forfeit your speaking time.
I'm talking about FEMA and the DWP, asshole. Pay attention. Isn't that what item 23 is about? Isn't it about the DWP and the fire in which you, as a city, a culprit, an organized criminal enterprise, has used your tools to manipulate us to believe you're doing your jobs? So why is it that I am ill today? Is it my fault that I had to suck in a whole week of dirty air? Is it my fault that the fire department ran out of water? Is it my fault that FEMA says, 42SC 1983, fuck you, get in line, use your insurance, and sign up, bitch? That's what all of you are gonna do. You're gonna tell your clients, you're gonna tell your constituents, you're gonna use a real Social Security and not a dirty nigger one like Marquezzi, and sign up to be heard by FEMA. So if you don't like this shit, you jive-ass nigger, now you know. Now you know that I and Trump figured it out. California's doomed, you're fucked, and fuck the mayor, fuck the city of Los Angeles, and fuck your fires. Burn, baby, burn!
Your time has expired. Next speaker.
What's up, Groot? Rob Quan, and I want to just begin by thanking Groot and Fable, because I'm assuming they're the ones who stepped in and reminded everybody about the Brown Act and got this comment opened up, so thank you. I've had enough time to read the two dozen motions, but I did notice we have 16 and 17 that are both on evictions, and about halfway through our little recess there, 16 got crossed out and sent back to committee. And I just find it weird that we couldn't have an open debate on the council floor about the merits of both of these related motions before moving ahead. But I did hear that C, the California Apartment Association, doesn't like 16, so maybe that just ruled out the vote and let us know the votes weren't there. I don't know. I want to say that remote public comment matters, and it matters at a time like this because the people most affected by these fires can't be here. They're in evacuation warning zones, and they gotta be ready to go. Or they've already left the county. How many people in Tracy Park's district have left LA County and can't make it down here for a meeting to address the matters that actually affect them? I'll give up the rest of my time. Thank you.
You have three minutes for the items. Go ahead.
Animal abuser. So yes, now we'll go through the special motions, not available on URL for you. Fuck special item number one. Okay. Fuck special item number two. These are all these Tracy Park motions. The demon Tracy Park Seaton. Number three, fuck number three. Fuck special item 24. And then we get to special item 16. How come UNICEF Louisa Hernandez can't get a goddamn law passed in this chambers? She was gonna freeze the fucking rents till 2026 and stop landlords from gouging. That is perfectly within the police power and under a state of emergency. How come UNICEF doesn't know that? And why is UNICEF allowing the Jews to shaft her motion so it doesn't get passed today? It's never gonna get passed, UNICEF, unless it gets passed today. How come you can't do your job? What's wrong with you? Look how they steal. Look how that. And you've been sitting in your chair, voting automatically yes for every piece of federal fraud and theft in this fucking place for two fucking years, and they can't give you this win? Not one fucking win for you. And there's a reason. Why? Why is the reason? Well, they wanted to lose reelection. Exactly! Don't you know they're gonna bring back Gil Sodillo and remove you and put him back in your chair? Because you're fucking up.
I ask that you stick to the rule 23 motion.
Well, we're trying there, Mr. Pumpkin H. DEI. Now we'll get back to the list. Fuck Tracy Park motion number 15. Fuck Tracy Park motion number 19. Fuck Tracy Park motion number 20. Fuck 21. But I support number 22 by Tracy Louisa Park. Yes, we should give millionaires and billionaires additional FEMA places so that they don't have to drive to the ghetto like Canoga Park over in Bob's district, where all the drug addicts are and homeless. We should have pretty places in the pretty 11th district. Don't you know, Tracy Park, you could have put your FEMA center in Marina Del Rey, over there in the Ritz Carlton Hotel, and Goat Puppet could have went there and stayed for free. But you didn't put that in a motion. And most of all, where's the goddamn special motion to restore telephone public comment? Why aren't any of you restoring telephone public comment? Is that all you want to do is listen to me?
Your time has expired. Next speaker. Three minutes.
That's the best description of it all. We're giving special favors. Mike Greenspan, some of this stuff is, here we go again. And first of all, waving, having the no evictions. When we went through this with COVID, it was a great example for the deadbeat tenants to say, bye-bye. I had some neighbors upstairs from me. Do you know how much they left owing the landlord? $18,000. So let's give a big ol' stiffy to the landlords, maybe even the mom and pops, because that's what's gonna happen. And gee whiz, Rick Caruso's son and daughter-in-law and daughter lost their homes. Well, just go up to daddy. Daddy, may I have $10 million? Oh, sure. I mean, that's one-tenth of what he spent trying to be mayor.
So, Speaker, this is not general public comment. I need you to speak to the special items.
Well, we're talking about replacing homes. These are people that are rich. Somebody I was talking to in Florida about, oh, there's these people in Palisades, and I said, if you own land there, you're a land baron. She went to her search engine and said, oh, the average home is $4.3 million. Gee whiz, folks, if you've got a $4.3 million home, I'm sure you have some assets. I'm sure you're not gonna be out on the street because you'll be able to find a room someplace, a Holiday Inn, a Ramada, somewhere. You don't have to be at the Waldorf Astoria, even though a lot of these people in the neighborhood could afford to be there. We're talking about Palisades. We're not talking about South Central. We're not talking about Pacoima. We're talking about the haves, complete total haves. And it's interesting that Tracy Beach suddenly wants to up the taxes when it comes to her district and to help tax the rich. Let's give it away to the rich. Ho, 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 Merry Christmas again! We'll have Christmas once each month at the rate we're going, and it'll only be the people on the nice list, which of course, I'm always on the naughty list with you Santas, but I don't care. I don't give a flying fuck, because after all, I know that when there's money in it, there's always strings attached, and the strings attached become unworkable, and the thing won't get solved, because you know what I'll be doing? You guys will be around jerking your dicks like this. That's what you'll be doing, and that's all you'll be doing. So you've had a great, wow, let's have grandstand photo op, press conference opportunities. At least the gals won't be jerking the dicks, but you guys, that's all you do. And as far as that drama between Mayor Bass and the fire chief, why doesn't the fuck she fire her if she's so incompetent? Of course, to fire the mayor, you have to recall her. We all know she's fucking incompetent. This whole thing sucks, I dick.
Go ahead, you have three minutes for these special items.
Thank you. This is about a fire, right? Like, I sat through an hour this morning here, and you guys congratulate yourselves on what an amazing job you're doing with this crisis, where the people, we, the people, are focused on what led up to it. And guess whose names come up, you know, on that list? It's all you, the mayor, every department imaginable, Public Works, all of it. Where's the water? I'm hoping that part of this is figuring out how to get our water. See, like, these people, their community burnt down in front of an ocean. And I'm not stupid, I know you can't just pump ocean water through the equipment, but you shouldn't have, you know, to burn down next to water, because you know what's inside that ocean? All the water, the rainwater that drained off into it. All of our water, all of our rainwater drains off right into the ocean, because you guys don't understand reclamation. And I see Public Works has been, you know, trying to get all this reclamation stuff going, and that's gonna, that could take years. So in the meantime, I hope these people get what they need. They need to be able to get their insurance, they need to be able to get permits without all these fees and all these, you know, all these hurdles that you make everyone jump through. Somebody said that they had a fire and they had to wait a year to get a permit to clean up. If that's true, that's ridiculous. I hope you guys are fast-tracking every permit, making sure that they are getting their insurance paid, making sure they have what they need, and stop praising yourself until we see how this pans out. Because you know what? It's obnoxious. That was the most disgusting display of like, oh, look at us, we're amazing. No, you know who's amazing? The people at the Santa Anita Raceway, not the Scientologist who stole half of the stuff, you know? I'm talking about the real people who are giving out stuff to the community. The community's showing up. We're the heroes. The people are the heroes in this situation, not you. The people are helping each other, the people are taking in pets and volunteering and doing what they have to do. They're the heroes. Did you ever mention them, or you're just patting yourselves on the back? It's ridiculous. We're tired of, and Bob, where's Bob? Said, you know, we gotta do things new. Can we start by listening to the people when they're talking? Because you know, you're not gonna, you're not willing to listen to them on the phone, which is ridiculous, because the point was well-taken. You're just, we're going through an emergency. Like, why do I have to be down here to speak today? Why do I have to travel all that time, you know, to come down here? I have to, because I need to redress you. I've had enough of it, and I'm here to redress you every chance I get. But see, there's people that maybe can't come down here, and they have a right to redress you. And you're stopping free speech, and it's wrong. Now, I understand like this, I know it has to get in quick, because you need to make decisions, but we didn't have the proper time to really go through this. I don't know what you're trying to pass here.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
All right. Good morning. So several inquiries. Number one, or they already talked about it, number one is where is the water? So I heard that, you know, some sort of a water reservoir waiting, needing to be repaired. Well, this is a common thing in LA. Every time I call my council member Hernandez, you know, please fix our sidewalk, please fix our toilet, please fix our condom, no, never gonna get fixed. So this time is the water reservoir, and then never gonna, after one year and a half, never gonna get fixed. So what happened when your council member is responding like one year and a half late in repair the water reservoir? Deadly consequences. Billions of billions of dollar loss as a consequences. No response from the government official leads to deadly costly consequences. That's number one. Number two, let's talk about our personnel strength, our firefighter. I heard that hundreds, if not thousands, shortage of firefighter dealing with the fire. And then, again, this is no surprise. I have been talked about, you know, for so long that we need thousands more LAPD officer, we need thousands of more LAPD firefighter, we need thousands of more toilet repair. Again, you know, after comments, after comments, I reach out to our council member Hernandez, you know, she told me that, well, maybe I'm not Latina, I'm not Hispanic, I'm not qualified to be a Mexican, maybe I don't qualify for assistance. But at the same time, everybody trying to cut the budget, cut the LAPD, cut the LAPD, what will happen after you cut? It will lead to costly consequences, deadly consequences. So again, I said it more than 100 times, this is just a repetition. Number three, talking about our response time. Why that in some other country, in my country, North Korea, in my other country, in Japan, when they have a huge fire incidence overnight, they were able to have 10,000 firefighter nationwide, 20,000, 30,000 nationwide? I heard there's a, there's a fire in Communist China in 2012 overnight, they have more than 30,000 firefighter. But the last time I checked, in the fire of this scale, LA, Los Angeles, still are only having like 6,000 firefighter. But in other country, they were able to have tens of thousand firefighter overnight. Why city of LA having no plan dealing with the emergency? And why city of LA are extremely slow in coordinating to fight the fire? Always slow, always delayed because of the DEI.
And, Mr. President, I do not see anyone else lined up. Would the council president like to close the public comment on the specials?
Public comment on the special is closed?